Welcome, everyone, to the Pembroke Pines City Commission Meeting of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Good.
I'm here.
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. If you will all stand, please, we're gonna have the, the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem today performed by Daniela Ortega, who's thirteen. She's a Pembroke Pines resident, she lives in Towngate, and she is a student at the Christian Academy, and she's an eighth grader. And we're very happy to, she's, she's done this before, so she's, she's a veteran at this. So please, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Wow. Daniela Ortega, Towngate, thank you so very, very much. That was just beautiful. Thank you so very, very much.
Good voice.
Announcements of items to be pulled from the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Presentation number two has been pulled from the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we begin, in the order of business today will be-
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hernandez. I also pulled item six, please.
Item six, for discussion, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir. And feel better, please, that flu is going around.
Yeah.
The, the order, the order this evening is gonna, we're gonna do presentations first, and then we're gonna have a short workshop, and then after that, we're gonna have the regular city commission meeting. But before we begin, I'm very, very sorry to announce that Tammy Farthing, who's six, just sixty-seven years old, passed away on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Tammy worked for the city of Pembroke Pines for twenty-eight years. She retired in two thousand and eight as the Director of Community Services. She was instrumental in planning and creating the Community Services Department as we know it today. I remember her from when I first began working here at the city, and she was an absolutely amazing person, loved by everyone at City Hall, and by many, many seniors and others who, who she worked with. Before we begin, a moment of silence, please, in honor of Tammy Farthing. Thank you very, very much. And now we'll do presentations. Commissioner Rodriguez, if you would accompany me, please? Our first proclamation is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines declaring Women's History Month. And I'm gonna ask Commissioner to read through the whereas', and I'll wrap it up on the bottom. Thank you.
Women's History Month, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and the strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions of our nation, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, and the civil, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas these contributions, the role of the American woman in history, has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature teaching and the study of American history.
Thank you. Now therefore, I, Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the great city of Pembroke Pines, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby recognize Mayor of March two thousand and twenty-five as Women's History Month in the city of Pembroke Pines. Congratulations to all the women we love in our city. Thank you very much.
We're gonna have our Panther Run students, our Girls in Capes, our Kids in Capes that are gonna come up and receive the proclamation. I'm gonna read their names. So we have Ms. Panther Run staff, Ms. Nicole Williams, Zoe Thompson, Ayla Espial, Viviana Rodriguez, Victoria Capilongo, Stella Hennekeen, Chloe Clark, Liliana Planas Roman, Maria Jordi Carui. I hope I said those correct. So these girls are from Panther Run, and they have what's, their student government is actually called Kids in Capes, and for the first time this year, they had an all-girls elected student government, and I had the opportunity to go visit them and hear a little bit about their program last year, right? Last year? This year? Okay, earlier this year. And I wanted to make sure that we are honoring the students, especially our young leaders here, because the theme of this year's proclamation, or for Women's History Month, is women educating and inspiring generations, and these are the prime example of the generations we are aspiring with all the work that we do. And so, thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to do this proclamation, and I believe we have a couple of words, right?
Good evening, Pembroke Pines. My name is Zoe Thompson, and I'm a fifth grader and Kids in Capes president at Panther Run Elementary School. What is Kids in Capes? Kids in Capes is a club all about promoting kindness. C-A-P-E-S stands for Community Action Projects Executed by Students. We complete many community service projects throughout the year like Harvest, Pet, and Toy Drive. We also help eighteen classrooms, pre-K, and kindergarten by reading or playing with the students. The most important thing about our club is we help bring awareness to our school of how important it is to spread kindness. Thank you for having us here tonight.
I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you to stand right here and have this, and then Commissioner and I are gonna get right behind you, and we're gonna take a photo.
I'm involved if you want me to come.
Go on, Mar.
Ten bad.
We good? Let's give 'em a round of applause.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It really is a pleasure, as a police chief, to be able to do this today, tonight. Police work isn't always great, but it is a great profession. And tonight, and particularly when we get to do promotions, it's a, it's a great event for us. It's a positive event. It's great for our community, and it's great for our city. And so, what a great pleasure it is to get to introduce two of our very wonderful members of our police agency, and formally place them in a leadership role that they have both earned with hard work, dedication, and perseverance. And as always, thank you to our elected for your support, and thank you very much to our residents for their support as well. With that said, Detective Kevin Rodriguez, will you please step up? You have family members you'd like to come up as well?
Um, my wife, Kelly.
Wife, if you'd like to come up with them, and if you'd like to stand on this side of the podium so the camera can get great pictures of you. Detective Kevin Rodriguez joined the Pembroke Pines Police Department in August of two thousand and eighteen. With him today are his wife Kelly, who happens to be a former police service aide for the agency, so they are both a family of service to our city. Daughters Kennedy and Kaylee, Father Robert, Sister Chriselle, Brother Robert, Stepmother Sissy, Father-in-law Todd, and Mother-in-law Joanne. During his career, he has served in the following positions: dive team, threat assessment team, field training officer, economic crimes unit, and special victims unit. Detective Rodriguez holds a bachelor's degree from Florida International University in criminal justice. During his career, he has received a lifesaving award along with several individual unit commendations. It is with great confidence that I present Detective Kevin Rodriguez to our city administration and to our city commission, to our Pembroke Pines Police Department, and to the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines as he enters this leadership role in the rank of Sergeant. Mayor Castillo, will you please administer the oath of office?
With pleasure. Would you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Kevin Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
-that I will support, protect, and defend-
That I will support, protect, and defend.
-the Constitution and government of the United States-
The Constitution and government of the United States.
-and of the state of Florida-
And of the state of Florida.
-and the charter and ordinances-
And the charter and ordinances.
-of the city of Pembroke Pines.
The city of Pembroke Pines.
That I am duly qualified to hold office-
I am duly qualified to hold office.
-under the Constitution of the state-
Under the Constitution of the state.
-and that I will well and faithfully perform-
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
-all the duties of the position of Sergeant in the Pembroke Pines Police Department-
All the duties of the position of Sergeant within the Pembroke Pines Police Department.
-which I am now about to emper.
Which I am now about to emper.
So help me God. Congratulations, Sergeant.
Would you like to say a few words? Yes, I have a speech prepared. Just a few words. Actually, can everybody hear me okay? For the record. Need the mic. Good evening, Chief Fargus, Command Staff, Mayor Castillo, Commissioners, City Manager, friends and family. It is an honor to be standing here and accepting what is the most important position in my career. I wish to begin by saying thank you. Thank you to Chief Fargus and his Command Staff for selecting me from an extremely talented, uh, from a list of extremely talented and gifted officers. Thank you, Mayor Castillo and Commissioners, for trusting the Pembroke Pines Police Department to be the protectors of peace within the city, and most importantly, to be, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, to be the protectors of peace in the city. And most importantly, thank you to the citizens of Pembroke Pines. While this ceremony is celebratory in nature, I understand that the very reason our positions exist are to serve the citizens of Pembroke Pines, and I am grateful, and I look forward to serving the community that served me. Serving the community that served me sounds nice, but it's not just a catchphrase. It's true. It's my motivating factor and inspiration as to why I became a police officer, more specifically within the city of Pembroke Pines. See, I went to middle school in the city, I went to high school in the city, I got my first and only speeding ticket in the city, Captain Finer. I met my wife, uh, and, and, and had two beautiful baby girls in the city, and we were able to purchase a home in the city. One way or another, the past and present police officers of Pembroke Pines have protected, have protected us in ways that are incalculable, and tonight I am honored to elevate the level to which I get to serve this community. Before coming to terms with becoming a sergeant, I gave serious thought on how I arrived here and what influenced me along the way. The realization came around the time that Chief Fargus was selected to lead our police department, more specifically when I learned that we had a new mission statement. For some who may not know, the mission of the Pembroke Pines Police Department is to be leaders in public safety through professionalism, innovation, nobility, engagement, and service. Poetically, this acronym spells out Pines. And Chief Fargus explained further that we do things the Pines way. Now, this mission statement is refreshing in you, but doing things the Pines way, what is, what does that really mean? Well, it depends on who you ask, right? But since I'm up here, I will tell you what it means to me. To me, the Pines way is a unique approach and structure that has fostered an environment conducive to leadership and public safety for several decades. In essence, the Pines way is what made it easy for me to grow from an officer to a sergeant and everywhere in between. The Pines way isn't leadership style exclusive to supervisors, but can be found all around us: officers, support personnel, service aides, Command Staff, and of course sergeants as well. It surrounds us even if we don't realize it's there. The Pines way is the professionalism Detective Koochai has on each of one of his four thousand arrests. The Pines way is innovative ideas used by Captain Pereira and Sergeant Jackson to really thrust the Economic Crimes Unit to the forefront of shift sheets. The Pines way is the nobility displayed by Sergeant Pallett and the rest of the Special Victims Unit to do a job that most people, including officers, will not. The Pines way is the engagement that Sergeant Sands has with his community. This is both off-duty, on his own time, and on-duty. And lastly, the Pines way is the service Sergeant Cuba and Helms have given to the future of this, this agency through the, the field training program. As you can see, much of the success I have is due to the environment which I worked in and the people that I worked with. It is because of the influence of the men and women that work for the Pembroke Pines Police Department that I was able to achieve this milestone here today, and for that, I say thank you. Now, while this department gave me all the tools I needed to succeed, all of this would not be possible if not for my wife, Kelly Rodriguez, excuse me. The only reason I get to come to work and chase my dreams is because you are building, you're building our family at home with our two beautiful daughters. I've been blessed to see you take on the role of motherhood and, while being the best wife man I can ask for. This accomplishment today is our accomplishment, and I cannot wait to celebrate with you. To my youngest daughter Kaylee, who cannot really understand what I'm saying right now, please, 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 stop playing with the dog water bowl. It makes, it makes a mess, and it gets everywhere. And to my oldest daughter Kennedy, who can understand what I'm saying, of all the accomplishments I've achieved in my life, being your father has brought me the most happiness and fulfillment. I love you three very much. Each day with you guys is an adventure, and I work tirelessly to make you proud. In closing, um, thank you, Chief Fargus and the Command Staff, uh, thank you, Mayor Castillo and the Commissioners and City Manager, uh, thank you to the citizens of Pembroke Pines for this opportunity. I'm enthusiastically looking forward to learning, leading, and serving the community that served me the Pines way. Thank you.
Officer Jonathan Hernandez, if you could please join me up here with your family.
Officer Jonathan Hernandez joined the Pembroke Pines Police Department in January of two thousand and thirteen. With him today are his brother Joel and family, sons Jacob and Matthew, and daughter Allison. During his career, he has served in the following positions: field force, vice intelligence and narcotics detective, homeland security team, SWAT tech team, and dive team. Officer Jonathan Hernandez holds an associate's degree in biology from Miami-Dade College, a bachelor in criminal justice from Florida International University, summa cum laude, and a master's degree in forensic accounting from Florida Atlantic University, magna cum laude. Over the course of his career, Officer Hernandez has received four individual commendations, seven unit commendations, several letters of recognition, and very importantly, a lifesaving award for saving the life of a fellow officer. It is with great confidence that I present Officer Jonathan Hernandez to the city administration and our city commission, to our Pembroke Pines Police Department, and to the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines as he enters this new leadership role in the rank of Sergeant. Mayor Castillo, will you please administer the oath?
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jonathan Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
-that I will support, protect, and defend-
That I will support, protect, and defend.
-the Constitution and government of the United States-
The Constitution and government of the United States.
-and of the state of Florida-
And of the state of Florida.
-and the charter and ordinances-
And the charter and ordinances.
-of the city of Pembroke Pines-
The city of Pembroke Pines.
-that I am duly qualified to hold office-
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
-under the Constitution of the state-
Under the Constitution of the state.
-and that I will well and faithfully perform-
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
-all the duties of Sergeant in the Pembroke Pines Police Department-
All the duties of Sergeant in the Pembroke Pines Police Department.
-which I am now about to enter-
Which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Well done.
First off, I wanna thank God. We're all here because of Him, but also my family, my friends that came to support me, the Command Staff, the Commissioners, the Mayor. I really appreciate it. God's timing is perfect. I've learned in life that every challenge, every setback, and every moment of doubt has led me here, and I know none of it was by accident. I wanna thank my children for being here. You are my foundation, my reason for everything I do. This job demands a lot, and I know there have been times I've missed moments, but through it all, you've been patient, understanding, and my greatest source of strength. I hope that as you see me step into this new role, you know that every sacrifice, every long shift, and every challenge I take on is not just about me, but for you, to give you a future you can be proud of. I love you more than words can say, and I'm always proud to be your dad. That was the hard part. I have a soft spot for my kids. To my brothers and sisters in the Pembroke Pines Police Department, your support through the challenges, and even in times when we give each other a hard time, it's all made me a better officer and a better leader. No one gets here alone, and I'm grateful for every one of you who has had my back along the way. I learned from a wise man that stepping into this role as sergeant isn't about me. Leadership isn't about stripes or titles, it's about responsibility. It's about making sure that people under my command have what they need, and they know someone's got their back, and that they never feel that they're doing this alone. I take that seriously. The Bible says in Matthew twenty-three eleven, "The greatest among you will be your servant." That's exactly how I see this role. I'm here to lead, but more importantly, I'm here to serve. Leadership doesn't stop there. It's also about the responsibility I have to my peers and those above me, to my fellow officers. Leadership means standing beside you, not just in the good times, but when things are tough, being someone you can count on, someone who listens, someone who will never ask you to do something I wouldn't do myself. It's about trust and about building a team where every member knows they are valued and supported. And to my Command Staff, leadership means carrying out this responsibility with integrity and professionalism. It means being someone you can trust to uphold the standards of this department, to take initiative and to ensure that our mission is carried out with the highest level of dedication. I understand that with this promotion comes greater accountability, and I embrace that. This job is tough. We see the best and worst of people, and we carry a weight that most will never understand. But we keep showing up, not because it's easy, not because we have to, but because we're called to do it, and that's something I'll never take for granted. As my Homeland Security Team motto states, "The mission never ends," but I step into this new role knowing that God has already gone before me. I'll do my best to lead with integrity, to stay true to the values of this department, and to always remember why I started this journey in the first place. Thank you all for your trust, your support, and for standing beside me. God bless you, and God bless this department.
All right, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a workshop that the City Manager asked for on capital projects. Mr. Dodge, how much time will you need?
Uh, probably no more than thirty minutes.
How, how long?
No more than thirty minutes, probably less.
Okay. If we can have consensus, we have a long agenda, let's keep this to thirty minutes, and please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. About five years ago, the city commission, at different meetings, contracted with outside consultants to create master plans, and those master plans dealt with transportation- consultants to create master plans, and those master plans dealt with transportation, recreational programs, economic development, traffic. And as a result of those master plans, city staff developed what we call a strategic plan. The strategic plan actually talks about all of these projects. So we're not here tonight to talk about bond issues or what has occurred. What we're here to talk about is what are other possibilities, alternative ways of which we can achieve some of those goals that were set for us in the strategic plan. We know that there were over two hundred million, two hundred and ninety million dollars worth of projects that were identified, and of the two hundred and ninety, sixty million of that were funds that the city was able to put together in a restricted fund, and at that time, I had designated it as funds for public safety and for a public safety building. It is my recommendation that we maintain that fund at this point as we move forward. I've had an opportunity since then to meet with the architect that had done the initial safety, public safety building estimates related to space analysis and the cost to build the proposed building. It's our recommendation, commission, that we continue with that, and we asked that architect to come back with a plan to do a design-build. Now, even though we do not have the sufficient funds to do it, and it may take about twelve months to put this program together, to put it out on the street for a bid, then we would know what the actual hard costs are. What we proposed was, at that time, is a hundred and ten million, and that was based upon an architect's estimate. However, with cost rising and knowing that this is a very important project, we believe by doing a hard bid or a design-build, we could come up with a number, and then at that point in time, probably within about twelve months, we would know what that cost was, and then we could reevaluate it at that time to determine how do we find the necessary funds to continue with this project. The other areas that we talked about, and the number-one issue was transportation. I can tell you that during, and I think I attended all forty or maybe forty-two community meetings with the public, and we heard input from the public, and the mayor always said that if we move forward, and if there's another source of funding such as grants or anything else is available, then we wouldn't use any type of borrowed funds. We just recently found out that Broward County, in the Third Amendment for the surtax, the gas tax, has indicated they're open to the idea of allowing all cities in Broward to receive about ten percent of those funds. That is not cast in stone at this point in time, but what that means to the city is about three-point-eight million dollars annually. We believe that if that is accurate and if that comes to fruition, we can leverage that three-point-eight million, and we probably could generate enough funds to do maybe half of the traffic, or fifty percent of the traffic issues. The other methodology we looked at are the gas taxes we receive. Instead of doing it as a pay-as-you-go, maybe leveraging some of those dollars as well that could generate some additional funds that we might pretty well be able to get maybe eighty percent of the traffic programs and projects in line to move forward, and this would be at no additional cost to the city in any ad valorem rates or anything else. And at the time that the, the strategic plan was determined, we did not have that information. So, and there may be other grant opportunities that would also help in other areas. Those are the two major areas that I think are important and staff has, have reviewed. New community facilities such as the senior center, there are no funds available. There are no available funds for recreational improvements. However, we can, as we develop and put together next year's fiscal year budget, that maybe there's one or two projects, if we can fit it within our budget without any necessary increase in taxes, we'll present that to you as well. Another area that had been discussed was economic development. I think it's important, and maybe we, as in our presentation staff, was not clear enough to really explain how that affects the city. We did three, I can think of, major projects. One is that we purchased property of a closed-down prison. We purchased through a bid the regional post office site on one-hundred-and-seventy-second, as well as the development of city center here, that we, we bought this property maybe some twenty-five years ago and worked with the developers to create a downtown area that would be important to us. Those three projects alone, just in tax revenue that comes not from you, but from those projects and the new tax value that's added to our rate, creates about five-point-six million dollars a year in new revenue. If we had not done that, that's almost like a third of a mill that we would have to place on property owners, residential and commercial, in order to provide the services that we provide today. So economic development still is a very critical, and it's a very important element for us to look at down the road, and how we might try to accomplish that. So once again, that did not create any additional tax burden to our residents in raising millage. And as you said, for the last ten years, we've been very fortunate that we have not raised our millage. In fact, over a ten-year period, it's been very stable, if not a little bit less. So the purpose for this evening and, and my request to talk about capital projects is that they're not going away. They're very much needed here in the city, and we're trying to find other ways to make some of those projects happen. So those would be staff's recommendation to you this evening. I'm not asking you to vote on it, but I want you to be aware of it, and also provide the staff with your thoughts as to how we move forward. But I think it's, I think it's very, very important that we retain that sixty million dollars in, in a fund balance restricted account for the police department that earns interest each year. I think it's important to note, too, that we started this maybe seven years ago by setting up a restricted account to gain sixty million. But the other important thing is ten million dollars of that, we were able to put into that fund because we had the foresight to enter into a public-private partnership with Wetland Creation, and we received thirteen million dollars just in the last few years on the sale of Wetland Credits. Three million of that went to the Dream Park or Armstrong Park, which is almost completed at this point, and the other ten million went into this fund. It takes an awful long time to accumulate that kind of money because it's, whatever money is remaining at the end of a fiscal year that's not spent, we have restricted it. We've placed some money in an unrestricted fund because we're required to have at least fifteen percent of reserves in case some unknown issue comes up, such as a hurricane or a reduction in revenue. But this is very important to us. So that's what I'm presenting to you this evening, Mayor and Commission, and I'm open to any thoughts you have as we move forward in furthering the development of this as we move along.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm very anxious to hear my colleagues, so I'm, I'm gonna just throw out a few comments here that I have. Interesting that the surtax is pivoting a little bit on, on how they're making funds available because they've been very, very restrictive in how we were able to access those dollars. So it sounds like what you're saying is, is that they're about ready to provide as ten percent of the total that they get, and the ten percent will be shared amongst all cities within Broward County, is that correct?
Yes, that, that is my understanding, and that was through the efforts of the Broward League, the City Managers Association, in working with committees to try to make that happen. It's not a guarantee.
I got you. So the, because you mentioned it was a three-point-eight potential annual income. The current way that the surtax is operating, the ten percent, one of the things that they do a, they do a cutout of that ten percent is funding the community bus services throughout all of Broward County. Are they excluding that, or are they still using that as part of a deduct from the ten percent?
No, it's my understanding that it's a clear ten percent.
Okay, good. That's great news.
Any carve-out for any other roads that they make a determination on a county-wide basis or transportation.
Okay. What do we need to do in order to support that? What does the public need to do to support that?
Excuse me. At this point in time, until we hear further from the county, we will advise you of that. At this point in time, it's still in discussion stages.
Okay. Anything I could do to amp the voice up, I think that would be something I would be very, very happy to do. The, the next thing I just want to make reference to is that, you know, we, we were able to share our strategic plan, and that strategic plan had a number of projects in different categories. And the question was basically, you know, to the public, do you agree to these plans or these projects, and if you do, when do you want to get them done? So we are in a position now of knowing that, that answer. So I'm interested in seeing what would be a ten or even a fifteen-year capital project plan using those projects we've already identified and somehow putting them in some sort of priority order, because we're not going to be able to get them all done at a single time now, or within a short period of time. So it's obviously going to be something that's going to take a very long time for us to get these things done, because I don't think this commission would allow us to not continue to move forward with those things we have already identified. We have, you know, we've identified them. We know what we need to do. Now, I'm very interested in at least seeing what a ten- or fifteen-year plan is, when are certain projects anticipated to be completed with the funding restrictions that we have. So me, that's my, that's my most important input to this, is what is a ten-year capital plan going forward with these projects we've already identified, and what years we anticipate to fund them, and if it's not a ten-year, it's a fifteen-year, if it's not a fifteen-year, it's a twenty-year plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I reserve my comments for later.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rodriguez.
I think what, in the meetings and town halls that we went to, one of the biggest concerns was the traffic, and it's not just what I've heard on, during those forums, but what I hear with residents when I talk to them, and they call in, I think, the increasing amount, or increasing highlight of some accidents recently due to speed, things like that, have made people a little bit more anxious about what we're gonna do regarding speeding, traffic, things like that, whether it is through the capital projects. I would really like to see some things, particularly in the Silver Lakes areas, one of the areas that have gotten the most complaints about, basically, from that community, and that does impact both District Three and District Four. So looking into those projects that might have already been a long time coming, or if we can't do it through capital projects, how can we do it through our operations for our police department to be, have the capability to do more enforcement out west? Because the way that it's broken down in the police operations, we do have generally less officers out, on our side, and I, because of all the HOAs and things like that. But if the concerns still stand and we aren't able to do larger capital projects, are we able to do on a smaller scale some operational changes so that people do see that the enforcement is there on the traffic end? Would be a suggestion that, you know, we can kind of weigh. And then one of the things that I would like to delve in a little bit more, I think it's a great plan from Vice Mayor Good, to see a ten, fifteen-year plan based on these possible additional funds that we can go over. But I think it would be useful to have a larg, a longer format workshop, and I think this is the initial conversation of that, and it can be tied into our yearly budget visioning session. But those are my, I guess, initial comments for that, because that it was the feedback that we got, as well as obviously for our officers to have a good place to, to work. But those were kind of the top-tier issues that we heard from, whether it be at the forums or personally through residents reaching out.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Okay, and I apologize again that I'm not there, but I don't want to get anyone sick with the food, so I apologize for being absent tonight and on the phone. I wanted to thank the manager for his explanation, but I'm gonna be requesting several meetings with him and staff on this, especially when it comes to the county surtax. To Vice Mayor Good's point, if I heard him correctly, if there's anything that we can do, I would like to get involved in that effort. I know in, in Miami-Dade, their half-penny surtax is, twenty percent of it is set aside to share with all thirty-four municipalities. So doing it in Broward, where ninety-nine percent of the county is incorporated with thirty-one cities, only makes sense. I'm not sure how that was ever implemented, or maybe I'm just misunderstanding. So I'd like to discuss that, but also I, I think this is a long-term discussion, I will say, because, Mayor, I know you were in Tallahassee, there are bills up there that could impact the way that municipalities collect revenue. I'd like to see how those play out in session, and I also would just like more concrete answers to similar questions that I'll, that I'll have as I go along. So I thank you for letting me ask these questions and participate, and thank you, Mr. Dodge, and your team for putting this together.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Dodge, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your leadership, I want to thank you for your vision, I want to thank you for being the pillar that we can lean on. Certainly, the, this is the start of a much deeper conversation that this commission needs to solve. That being said, Mr. Dodge, we need to look at ways that we can be more effective with the dollars that we're already collecting. We need to be a little bit more focused on bids that we award, estimates that come in, and ask our vendors to do a better job. It's incredibly important that the public is assured that every dollar collected is a dollar accounted for. With that being said, public safety, as I mentioned years ago, is our number-one priority. And when it comes to a priority list that the Vice Mayor mentions, I think it goes without saying that PD has to go first. Public safety has to go first. We also need to take a look at the strategic plan. The public was very clear on what they would support and what they wanted, and we can have that conversation at a later time. Finally, the conversations that, that are here on live TV will sometimes get maybe a little bit messy, a little bit disorganized, because we're hearing it for the first time. As such, we had no backup tonight, so we are all responding to what the city manager is giving us right now. With that being said, I am open to have as many meetings as possible, to have a budget workshop that we can go into twenty-five, twenty-six with a clear vision for the public to absorb, for the public to participate. for the public to absorb, for the public to participate. And we certainly need to address the immediate needs that our residents are expecting from us now. We have a beautiful city. We have an absolutely beautiful city, and I wouldn't trade any other city in Broward County. And so I'm very proud of what we have. I'm proud of our staff. I am proud of the folks who go to work every day on behalf of the public. That doesn't mean that we have to just say, you know what, we're good enough, because we can always do better. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say that through this exercise, which was uplifting at times and painful at others, this city learned more about how the city of Pembroke Pines operates than it probably ever has before. This was an ongoing sort of workshop with them about what goes on in the city. And probably, if I was to pick one area where we don't really historically haven't done as well as we should, it would probably be in the area of communications. This is not a city that has really had a need to communicate tremendously before in the past. But it became painfully clear through, throughout this process that there was a need, a thirst in the community to really understand our city better. And we've begun that process. I don't see things in terms of beginnings and endings. I see things as very apropos of what the Sergeant Hernandez said, the Pines way. The Pines way is when we have a problem, we figure out how to solve it. And we're not satisfied until the problem gets solved. And while we had a vote that rejected a plan of action, residents really did understand these particular needs. Simply, they want us to work harder at figuring out ways to do this without increasing taxes, especially now. This is a scary time that we're in. And I have to tell you, it was a lot scarier the day before Election Day than it was back in May when we started these town hall meetings. Things changed very, very quickly. And, but that's okay. That's okay, because the Pines way is you don't give up. You have a problem and you keep moving forward, and you find another way, and you find another way, and you find another way. And you only say, we only spike footballs when problems get solved. So, Mr. Dodge, you mentioned a couple of things. And one of them was to do, to begin the process for a design build for the police station. I think that's a good idea. I just don't understand why it will take a year to do it. You and I will talk a little bit more. I can, I can understand that it will, it's not going to go out tomorrow, but I don't know why it takes a year to do that. We're going to have to figure that out. I don't know what the timetable is, or, and I want to, and I want to sort of associate with Vice Mayor's message and Commissioner Hernandez's message, anything that we can do to accelerate a decision with respect to Surtax dollars, we're happy to do. And you're absolutely right. At every one of the town hall meetings, this city was very clear with the residents to say, this is a line of credit that we're asking for, but if there are grant funds or if there are other opportunities that come in that don't require us to borrow, we're not going to borrow. We're going to use those opportunities. There was no eagerness to borrow money that we might not need to use. Simply asked for a line of credit. However, even that was too scary for the times that we're in right now. And so we must redouble our efforts in every single way to show the residents that we're going to be communicating, that we're going to be listening, that we're going to be showing them more information, but that we're in problem-solving mode. And that, a plan was rejected on Election Day, but none of the problems were voted away. All of the problems that we had the day before Election Day, they're still there the day after. And so I think this is a very good start. I would like to see us continue to have this conversation. But in my mind, a problem is there to be overcome. And the sooner we overcome it, the better off we'll all be. I'm also very concerned about escalation in costs. This has been, this has been a concern of mine all along. The longer we wait, the more things are going to cost in terms of construction. We're talking about infrastructure and capital projects. Whatever we can do in the area of parks, squirreling money away here or there within the bottom line of the budget, that's just going to have to do for the times that we're in. We're going to have to figure out a way to make those things work. But that doesn't mean that we have a lower standard here at Pembroke Pines. And holding standards high is an important thing. And I think, I think the, I think the residents of the city also understand that a city that doesn't invest in itself cannot prosper. It just can't. We have to continuously move forward in a positive direction, otherwise we will be slipping backwards. But I like what I've heard. I like the direction that you're going in. And hopefully, Mr. Manager, this is enough information for you to start doing your work. And I want to thank all the staff and all the, all of the efforts, all of the many evenings that we spent together and so forth. They were all worth it. We work, we walk out of this experience and into a new one, stronger as a community, because people understand this city better, they understand the issues of the city better. And now it's time to come together and find another way to achieve the goal. So I want to thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioners. And we are ready to enter into our regular city commission meeting now. And let me begin by asking, do we have any items at the request of the public?
None, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there a commission auditor report?
None, Mayor.
Appeals of the Board of Adjustment Decisions?
None, Mayor.
Announcements of board and committee appointments?
None.
Okay. I will have, just to give you a sense, I will have a meeting soon with Deborah, and I will have my budget commission appointees on the next city agenda meeting. And they can then begin to have their, their meetings. Consent agenda consists of items one through eighteen, is it? One through eighteen. Commissioner Hernandez has pulled item six. Does anyone else have any pulls?
Item fifteen, Mr. Mayor.
Item fifteen for the Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Any from the public? Hearing none, I would like to have a motion, please, for items one through five, seven through fourteen, and sixteen through eighteen.
Motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Rodriguez, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Commissioner Hernandez, you're recognized for item six.
And, thank you, Mayor.
Would you like me to read that into, would you like me to read that for you into the, into the record, or you want to do it?
If you can hear me fine, I'll just read it.
Go right ahead.
Motion to approve the change order for the purchase of practice and duty ammunition for the police department's training unit from Moments and Shooters, Inc., in the amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-two cents, utilizing pricing established by the state of Florida, the term contract number four six zero 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 two one STC, defense products pursuant to section thirty-five point one eight C five and thirty-five point two eight B of the city's code of ordinances.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Sir, you're recognized.
I'm going to be supportive of the item, Mayor, but I will say it was a little unsettling when I read this item. This was approved. Now we're talking about a change order of almost twenty thousand dollars. I'm satisfied with what, I'm the one who asked about it in the Monday evening memo. And I appreciate Mr. Bonilla, our Assistant City Manager, providing that. But for the record, and he puts it in the memo, but I just, very quickly, if maybe Mr. Dodge or Mr. Bonilla could explain the steps that we're taking to avoid a similar situation in the future, because frankly, I hate change orders. I know sometimes they're necessary, but I hate it. We vote on something, that should be the final price. So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, if I could just ask for a brief explanation on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dodge?
Mr. Gomes will come up.
Good evening, everyone. Mark Gomes, procurement director. Just to clarify, this agenda item was brought back in December for the approval of purchasing ammunition off of the state contract. When the police department started working on this contract, on this purchase back in September, before the new fiscal year starts on October first, they received some quotes from the vendor, Lawman Shooting and Supply. On October first, that vendor had price changes. The state contract utilizes MSRP pricing and a discount off of that. The Winchester brand products had a price increase at that point. The department received quotes beforehand. We moved forward with taking that to the city commission on the December meeting for approval. The vendor said they would honor the price at the lower rate, since we got the quote ahead of time. But the police department had some turnover in their department. And the staff that normally places the order, enters the purchase order in their department, did not enter the purchase order right away. As a result, the vendor stated they could not hold the pricing anymore. So they, the pricing reflected what the new pricing was effective at of October first. The police department has made sure to ensure steps in their department to have the staff enter purchases right away after commission meetings.
Okay, and I appreciate it, and that's basically what I saw in the Monday night memo as a response. I appreciate it. I just really would like to avoid these situations to the extent possible. I understand there are times when we do absolutely need change orders, and that's just part of the business we're in. But I, I just didn't, it didn't sit well with me when I read it. I appreciate what you and our, and our fine police department are doing, Mr. Mayor. I think there was a second, so I'm ready to vote. I just wanted to point this out.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Show passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, item fifteen for you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item fifteen, motion to approve the second amendment to the amended and restated agreement with Operations Management International, OMI, for operations, maintenance, and management of the city's utility system to waive the pollution liability insurance requirement for OMI subcontractor Craig A. Smith and Associates LLC.
Is there a second for discussion? Seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to this particular waiver of a pollution liability insurance. However, after reading the language in the amended agreement, I would like to ask my colleagues to consider another amendment to the, to the agreement, which would tighten this up a little bit. The specific language here speaks to Craig A. Smith Associates, is not required to comply with the insurance requirement of the agreement, which requires pollution liability insurance in an amount of no less than two million dollars for each incident and a two million dollar annual aggregate. My concern is that there's no specific reference that would state that this is only applicable in the event that Craig A. Smith does not do any services that would otherwise require pollution liability. So my amendment would ask my colleagues to support the, an amended language that would make it very clear that this waiver of a pollution insurance liability requirement is only effective as long as they are not providing any service that would otherwise require the pollution liability insurance.
Can you have utilities come forward, please?
Vice Mayor, could you identify the document in the backup page and paragraph, please?
It's page two of seven.
Okay, which, which section of that?
And that would be the amended agreement.
No, I understand. Is it section one, two, three, four?
Section two.
Thank you.
Where it says?
I see it now. Thank you.
Did you understand, your name and title for the record, please?
Mike Bailey, Utilities Director.
Mr. Bailey, did you understand the Vice Mayor's proposed amendment?
I believe I do. If I could get the assistance from the city attorney in crafting that language, I don't, I don't think that would be a problem.
Mr. City Attorney, do you understand the point of the amendment?
I do. And to the extent that the commission were to add it to the document, we would certainly amend it to reflect the motion as adopted and as approved.
And you have no objection?
I do not.
Any further discussion about?
Second, sir.
I wanted, I wanted to make sure, because we didn't, we didn't get the amendment before, so give me a second. Does anyone have any questions about the amendment?
I do.
Yes, ask your question about the amendment, and then I'm going to, and then I'm going to ask. We'll do one round, and then I'm going to ask for a second, because I haven't seen this amendment before. So I want to give you all an opportunity before it's seconded to ask some questions.
So, City Attorney, this is a one-way street. The vendor would have to agree to it. So would this be, the manager stepped away, but if, if this isn't time-sensitive, we need to throw it back on OMI to see if they would agree to whatever language that we would modify. And then we have to vote on, I mean, we can certainly approve a draft of section two rewrite, but we certainly can't expect the vendor to say yes, they're not here to represent themselves.
Mr. Bailey?
I understand what the commissioner is saying. I think that this could be approved tonight with the amendment. And if the contractor, which I very much doubt, but if they refuse that condition, we don't have an agreement, and I'll have to bring it back.
He was bringing back April second?
Yeah, we could.
Okay, I'm, I'm, Mayor, I'm comfortable with that. I don't want this hanging out too long, not knowing if we actually have, you know, a firm agreement on both sides.
So you're okay with the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
With your permission, to the extent that our Director of Utilities has probably, has a better feeling for what this contractor may be made able to doing, if the motion as proposed by the Vice Mayor is included in the approval, it would be subject to the preparation of an amendment of a language on page two, page two, paragraph, section two, to reflect the change. I'm assuming to the extent that if the vendor contractor would accept it, that it would be acceptable and could be signed and implemented. If there's a rejection or an opposition to that, we will bring it back to you.
And Mayor, could we include the city attorney's explanation as a part of, I'll second it, but include it in the maker of the motion?
It's already in the record.
Okay, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, for the Vice Mayor's benefit, he's not seeking to delay or defer. He's seeking to implement with the appropriate linguistic change, language change in the document, period.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the amendment? We're just voting on the amendment now. Hearing none. Any from the public? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Memo carried unanimously. Now we have a motion, now we have a motion as amended, which was brought by Commissioner Good and seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? They carried unanimously. Thank you, Vice Mayor. If it's possible, if we could get that information on amendments like that, I'm just asking everyone on the board in advance. It would, it would be a little bit better, maybe. I'm just asking. Second reading ordinances.
Okay, Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If you will, number nineteen is before you. It's a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty-two-five-zero-three on second and final reading in the document for public, public here and reads as follows. Proposed ordinance number twenty-two-five-zero-three is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute the fourth amendment to the agreement to enter into a sub-sublease with HG Pines LLC, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for effective date. Item number nineteen on the floor for consideration. Nineteen.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by, no, I'm sorry, moved by Commissioner Schwartz, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Let me, let me give you a sense of, of some of the work that's been done today. This morning, this morning I arrived from Tallahassee, but yesterday, with our legal team from Ballard, we met with both the House and the Senate Appropriation Committee Directors, having already met with both of the chairs of appropriations at the House and at the Senate. They are impressed with this proposed plan. They are particularly impressed with the model that Pembroke Pines has put forward, They are particularly impressed with the model that Pembroke Pines has put forward, which is that we build housing of this kind, and that we use the rents to offset the cost. They were not aware of any other city in the state that was doing the same sort of thing, and they're sort of asking questions as to why that's not a more used option. And they were very impressed with that. Even more impressed that we super-prioritize the placement of our own seniors and our own Pembroke Pines workers. Even more impressed that we seek to create an opportunity to recruit police officers and teachers and nurses and other essential employees who are in critical need and who are, and they, I mean, they just laid it out as if, as if it came from this dais, leaving the city, leaving the state, because they can't afford housing. They were very impressed with all of it. They asked some very pointed questions, which were answered very directly and very much to their, to their satisfaction. There are two bills where this can be dropped, two different bills, and they are trying to think of which one is best for it. The meeting was upbeat and positive and hopeful and mutually supportive. The Director of Appropriations at the staff level at the Senate wants to do one last legal review. He has questions as to why the deed or the leases that underlie our ability to execute this transaction are insufficient to earn in and of themselves the tax...
Exemption.
Exemption, correct, that we're requesting. But barring that, and with the support of both appropriations chairs, he sees this moving forward in some way. So that's good news. It still has to be, it still has to be agended, it still has to be heard, it still has to go through the process. But there was no one there who told us, nah, this is a dog, this is gonna, this is not gonna make it, this is not, we don't have the bandwidth. The typical answer is that you get in Tallahassee. It was the contrary. It was, this is actually very interesting, and let's see how we can get it done. So it was a very positive discussion, and we'll see what, what happens. And so I think that we're moving in a more positive direction now than we did before, and I encourage unanimous support of the item. Any further comment on this?
Quickly, Mayor.
Yes.
I want to thank our legislative team up in Tallahassee. I want to thank our legal team. I want to thank our city manager. I want to thank Marty Care and the property place's office, who could not be more than helpful with this scenario. And what's really exciting about this is I've always felt that this would be trend-setting for the entire state. I've always felt it. We spoke about it briefly at a prior extension. We're gonna help a lot of communities throughout the state of Florida, and I think this is a winner, and I'm glad we're on the field.
Any further discussion?
So, though this is at appropriations, so it's not, has not been agendaized, so when, what amount of time do we anticipate before they decide what bill they're going to do and what committees they're going to send it to?
We're not that far. We're not that far yet. We're, that's work that we will get, those are answers that will come to us from Ballard, who was very, very hopeful after the presentations that they and I gave at, you know, at those offices, and they will let us know. We have very, very capable people who are very highly thought of there, and they're gonna, they're gonna figure out which of these two bills is the best opportunity for us to win, and they will let us know. We're asking for this extension because it extends through the end of session, and that's hopefully, I mean, that was done intentionally so that we wouldn't have to come back and ask for another extension. Certainly, if this doesn't work, I think, I think we have to pull the plug on the thing and think of another way around it. But it was a very, very, very mutually supportive environment that I was in. I wasn't sure what we would walk into, Vice Mayor, on this, but it, they really, really like what's going on, and the reputation of the city goes far in terms of the phone calls that they made about how well we're operating the campus and so forth. They were very thorough. They had their stuff very, very well figured out. So, as soon as, as soon as we know, we'll advise.
All right. So, and thank you for that, and I'm certain you did a very great job of presenting and explaining, and getting their attention is wonderful. I have been watching a lot of these committee meetings, and I know the agendas have been very, very aggressive, very full, but things are really moving slow. And the reality is, is that they, though they might have a really great affinity towards what we're presenting, it may be something that they don't get on this particular session.
Could happen.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
And, but again, there's still a lot of lifts. We didn't get to unfortunately make this in the front end of when session was to begin, but that's the way things work. And I do hope, and I probably anticipate, that even if they don't get to take it up this year, that they will probably most certainly take it up next year, and again, you can continue to lead that, and that may even lead to a better opportunity for us, should we decide that we want to put this out for some sort of bid, because once people know that they have a clear opportunity for tax breaks, I think it will bring us a larger pool of folks, as opposed to us just having a presentation made to us in a way this was. So, again, thank you very much for what you did. I know you probably had a good time.
I didn't get to mention, they were especially impressed with you.
Mm-hmm.
When I told them that you had made the motion to, that any upside of this would go into additional housing, that was also very, they were very impressed by that, that this money is earmarked, that it's in a lockbox, that it's not going anywhere else, and they were very impressed with that.
Well, that's why I'm supporting this tonight.
Yeah.
For that reason.
Yeah, so that was, that was, all of that was discussed in Tallahassee, and they were very impressed with it. So, let's see. It's promising.
Yeah, it's good leadership.
And if you don't, if you don't, if you don't take a chance in life, nothing can happen, so. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, oh, excuse me, this is second reading?
Public hearing, Mayor.
Madam, is there, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on the item? Seeing none. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, and by your vote, this is executed, and I'm happy to sign it, and we're ready to go on that.
For the record, Mayor, commission, number is 2042-2040 for the record, Mayor.
Signed, sealed, delivered.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 20.
Thank you, Mayor, commission, number 20. First up, if you can, is a motion to pass, proposed ordinance number 2025-04 on first reading, which is an ordinance of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 155 of the Land Development Code of the City Pembroke Pines by specifically amending section 155.401 entitled zoning map to rezone the approximate 9.9 acre parcel generally located at the northwest corner of Pembroke Road and Hyatt Road from B3, that's general business, to C1, better known as commercial, approving an amended declaration of restrictive covenants for the subject property, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item number 20, number 2025-04 on the floor for consideration, Mayor and commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on first reading?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Thank you very much. Any, any discussion on the item? Any discussion on the item? Any from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Show passes unanimously. Thank you.
For the record, Mayor and commission, this was the first public hearing. There'll be a second public hearing on this item, honored before schedule for the 16th of April in these chambers for second and final public hearing.
Thank you very much. Item 21.
Thank you, Mayor and commission. 21 for the record is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2025-05, and it reads as follows. It is an ordinance of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 155 of the Land Development Code of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, by specifically amending section 155.401 entitled zoning map to rezone the approximate 1.8 acre parcel generally located south of Pines Boulevard and west of Southwest 186th Avenue from B3, better known as general business, to C1, known as commercial, approving a declaration of restrictive covenants for the subject property, providing for conflict, severability, providing for effective date, for the purpose of record on the floor, number 21 for first hearing and first review. Thank you, Mayor and commission, 21.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mayor.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Hernandez, are you moving this item?
I'm, yes. Yes, please, I move it.
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez moves the items. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion on this item? Any discussion on the item? Hearing none. Any from the public? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
For the record, Mayor and commission, this item will be considered, again, for a final second review under state statute and the city charter and code on, on or about May the 7th in these very chambers.
Yes, sir. Item 22, resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor and commission. Number 22 is a resolution. Motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2025-R-03, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of the utility work by highway contractor agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation in an amount not to exceed $12,042, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all actions necessary to effectually at the intent of the resolution, directing the city clerk to transmit a copy of the resolution to the Florida Department of Transportation, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item number 22 on the floor for consideration as a resolution. Thank you, Mayor and commission.
Is there a motion on the item?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rodriguez.
I know what I'm saying.
Any discussion on this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. You're recognized.
I clearly understand what this is, and it's standard stuff, but I have a sidebar comment in regards to this project, because this is the widening of the Pembroke Road from University Drive to Douglas. And I know that we have a couple of communities in there. I'm not worried about so much the communities probably being notified of the project and maybe having the communication. If I'm not mistaken, it's FDOT that is actually doing this project. But I do have a concern about the Howard Foreman complex, because that is a main point for enter, entry and exit, and there are some very key facilities that are right close to the Pembroke Road that could be impacted by some of the construction activities. So, I just want to know what are, because the Howard Foreman is us. It's a very large complex. What are we doing to notify all the different facilities and activities that are being used within that complex? How are they knowing about in advance of when there's anticipated construction, closures, rerouting, those kind of things?
Mr. Kennedy, could you come forward on that question? Name and title for the record, please.
Carl, excuse me, Carl Kennedy, City Engineer.
Thank you very much. Did you hear the Vice Mayor's concern?
Yes.
What do you think?
DOT's required to notify people within a certain radius of the project, so that we'll send them letters.
So, we are the radius, and we own the Howard Foreman site, and we have tenants. And so, when they notice us, that's the question I'm asking, what are we going to do to notify all those facilities that are located within the Howard Foreman complex that there may be traffic conditions that won't allow them to use that entry or exit on Pembroke Road? What are we doing to personally, because, I mean, we have, we have a facility there that takes care of mothers and their kids, and there's a school, and it's right next to Pembroke Road, which is where everybody's gonna go in and out of. So what are we doing to let them know that there is going to be those concerns? I don't expect maybe that you have an answer now then, but I really believe, Mr. Manager, Assistant Managers, Engineer, that we think about that.
Yeah, we'll definitely, yeah, we'll definitely notify all the, all the tenants of the, of the health park, you know, when there's gonna be construction happening.
Okay. Yes, sir, that'll be done.
Can I just say, for the senior center, I know that they send out continuous emails and things like that. Maybe they can have either a sign on the door, and that's something we can talk to Jayshak.
Whatever they do, all I know is that we need to let them know, otherwise it won't be done.
Exactly.
And we just opened a brand-new facility there that deals with a very, you know, with the low income and the footprint to success, and it's right, that's their entry and exit.
Yeah.
And those people live there, and they probably mostly leave and come off of that road on Pembroke Road. So, that's a facility, and there are many others that, you know, provide human services, you know, and they're probably stressed enough as it is. We don't need to put more burden on them. We just need to be proactive.
Well, let's make sure they know.
Yeah, we'll notify everybody from the work release programs to the apartments to the mental hospital.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Point well taken. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Show passes unanimously.
The record, Mayor and commission, the permanent number is 2042 for the public record, 2042. On par, forgive me, Mayor, it's 3897, that's the resident, but 3897, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, with your indulgence, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, please. We're taking a five-minute recess. All right, we can resume. Regular agenda, no items. Reports to the league and the MPO representatives.
None from me, other than the general meeting tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Schwartz, what's going on at the, at the Broward League these days?
They keep canceling meetings, sir.
I'm sorry?
They keep canceling meetings.
They keep canceling them?
Yeah, so I might have to do, I don't know, I suspect maybe some waste management issues or something, I'm not sure, but we haven't met.
How'd the previous meetings go?
Well, they canceled December, and we, the league is, is going to have its leadership transition next month, so maybe they're waiting on that.
Okay, so the meetings have been going well?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, for, when they do meet, where everything's going well.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Reports of the city manager, Mr. Benia, do you have anything today? Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and commission. Number 23, if I may read into the record the motion, which is the sister of the item that you approved at the last regular city commission meeting with regard to our colleagues at the Memorial Healthcare System. If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It's a motion to approve the settlement agreement with the South Broward Hospital District, also doing business as Memorial Healthcare System and Davy Medical Center LLC, DBA, HCA Florida University Hospital, for litigation regarding the city commission order number 2023-01 referencing a freestanding emergency department site plan, et cetera. The motion's on the floor. The backup is available. It has been delivered, and if you will, we'd happen to make a brief presentation, either myself or by Assistant City Attorney Mike Cirillo. However, the item is self-supportive based upon the information from the last meeting. This is the final document and settlement agreement with the district in connection with the HCA matter.
Peace treaties. Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion is made by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion on the item?
I'm- Mayor, I'm happy that we're- that we're moving forward with this. Public dollars were being spent, and it- this one bothered me a lot, the way that they- the way it went about. But, you know, we were the bigger person in the room. I'm glad we have. We're moving forward.
Chapters open and chapters closed, and then they reopen again. And every once in a while, you get to pick up a new book. And so I'm very, very happy to put this behind us and continue with the long legacy of cooperation and friendship with our good friends at the South Broward Hospital District. Any further discussion? Any from the public? Seeing done, all those in favor?
Just- just one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I did- after last meeting, I did have Mr. Strum reach out to me. I spent about an hour with him yesterday.
Good.
He's eager to move on as well. So I- well, we were virtual, because I'm obviously very sick, so I didn't want to get him sick. But he spent an hour with me. He's very much looking forward to putting this behind us, so I just wanted to put on the record that I'm thankful that he made the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Show passes unanimously. Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just one more item, if I can, under the City Attorney report?
Yes.
You all received an email from Cindy Lacradara today that was sent by email. It's a confidential and privileged document with regard to the pending litigation with the City of Pembroke Pines in Hollywood, connecting certain information that we provided to you privately is now delivered to you in an official capacity. It's not spam. It's a real email, just for record. There's some attachments-
It was- it was well-written. It was- the information was good.
It may have-
I actually liked the delivery of it, to be honest with you. I mean-
It was a secure delivery.
Yeah, yeah, secure delivery, which was kind of-
But the faint-hearted might have thought it was spam. Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Nothing further on that item.
Anything further? Anything further for tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add new business, if I may.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I just wanted to ask real quick if staff can answer a quick question for me?
Yes.
Utilities, just for a moment. And the question as you come up is just if you can tell us the locations in the City of Pembroke Pines that are currently still on septic tanks, that are not sewer serviced.
Mike, excuse me, Mike Bailey, Utilities Director, for now. I haven't memorized that, but I do know that the portion of Pines Village south of Ninth Street is still on septic tanks. There are- there are some smaller parcels at Pembroke Road and the Turnpike that are still on septic. And I believe there are- there is a development, like an acreage development out west that is on septic, but I honestly don't know the name of that development.
He's got it right. The Fruitlands out by one-ninety-six, west of one-ninety-six, and the village is being connected there. Broward County-
Okay, thank you very much. I understand. So that's all I needed to know, was we got the Pines Village and the out west, right? And the reason why I ask that questions to my colleagues is that, you know, this-
May I interrupt you? Could you do me a favor? And I wasn't aware that this question was going to come up, so could you do me a favor and look into it officially and give us all that answer, so that we all have it? Because it's a concern of the Vice Mayor's, it's a concern of all of ours. So if you could just look into that and officially answer the question, who's on septic tanks, and just provide that to us in an email, you would tell me the way.
Certainly.
Thank you. Go right ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, the point is that I just wanted to make it clear that we have places in our city that are on septic tanks, where they all are at, you know, who they impact. And I think that's a great idea, that you get all that information. But we do have septic tanks in the city.
Yes.
And one of the things that the state has written in statutes is a requirement for people who are within a certain distance of any installed infrastructure, particularly sewer, they're required to connect. And the state has been putting a lot of pressure, probably even the county as well, about putting in sewer systems. And the whole point behind that is to protect our water supply, get people off the septic tanks. You know, they're not necessarily good for our water supply. Put sewer systems in, so it can be collected and treated and all that stuff. So, you know, it's something that unfortunately has to be done. And so I'm going to speak to the Pines Village, and you can extrapolate this to your other locations that may have septic systems as well. So it's like nearly the entire Pines Village, which is Seventy-second Avenue to the Turnpike, from Pines Boulevard over to Pembroke Road, a large number of homes, you know, are on septic. And we just recently got done with a project with the city-owned asset. So we went in, we did upgrade, we did the water, and we upgraded, and we put sewers where they didn't have sewers.
Repaved the roads?
And we paved the roads, and-
And we forgot to put in the sewer?
And we put in the sewer. And we did a very good job, actually. And it was our asset. Now, what makes that very important is that because we owned the assets, we were able to help guide the community through what is considered sort of a hardship, because it costs money to put these assets in. And probably the biggest cost to a homeowner is they have to make their own connection from the septic tank to the sewer system. And that cost could be anywhere between five to ten thousand dollars. And you're talking about in the Pines Village, a community that probably is on average around the eighty percent AMI, which is the average median income, eighty percent. So they're just, just able to take care of things, just able to take care of things. Ten thousand dollars is literally a crisis for them-
Yeah.
-to have to pay. So we, as a city, if you can explain a little bit, Mike, about how we handle the sewer connections for those people in the Pines Village that are on the City of Pembroke Pines sewer system. Could you explain how that worked for us?
Sure. Specifically, speaking to the connection work on private property, we advised them early on that this would be their responsibility, but we did give them some options. They could- they had an option to use the city's contractor, who did the rest of the work, at the contracted prices that we had intentionally put into that bid for work on the private property. They could take advantage of those prices. The contractor would do the work for them, and then they would be assessed that cost, and they could pay it. They could pay it upfront. They could pay it over five years at an interest rate of two and a half percent. Or they could elect not to do that and just go on their own, connect on their own. That's what we did in- for our project.
Okay. So essentially, anybody who could afford to make that payment, made the payment outright. Some people who couldn't even think about making the payment were below a threshold that allowed them for CDBG grants or ship grants in order to be able to get that cost covered for them through those grant programs.
That's true. There were five of those.
And then you got the gap. You got everybody in between. People who can't, you know, who can afford to live and are taking care of their families, but again, they're that one crisis away, so they couldn't afford a ten thousand dollar hit, and they couldn't get grant monies. So we, as a city, offered them the opportunity to have it paid through the water bill. What a great idea. And so a lot of them were able to deal with that. They were able to, you know, accept and comply and all that other good stuff, because now it was something that they could afford. So we did that, and I'm going to tell you, it actually turned out to be very well. This is- this is a, you know-
This is a good story.
It's a very good story, what the City of Pembroke Pines did. Now, we've got Broward County. Broward County actually has-
A sliver.
-a large portion of Pines as their service area. Literally, what the director said was, they're from Ninth Street south, so they are literally more than half of the Pines Village. And so now they are coming in, and they're doing the same thing we did.
Nice.
Which is nice, which is really good. And the county is, I believe, picking up a lot of the cost. However, when it comes to the connection of the sewer, from the septic to the sewer, they're saying, no, we're not going to help. As a matter of fact, they had a meeting this past week, or last week, and that meeting was very contentious. We even had a couple of seniors ready to actually duke it out, which was amazing.
This was a county meeting?
This was in Pembroke Pines Village.
Yeah.
But Broward County-
Right.
-put the meeting together, and, you know, they basically told everybody, you're going to have to pay like up to ten thousand dollars to make a connection, and they all went offline. And they were very angry, and it's very understandable, because they knew that we just did the north side. But they didn't- but the connection between the city and the county just wasn't made. You know, they were like, what's the city going to do for us? You did it for the north, what's it going to do for us? And so they're believing that we have a responsibility to do what we did in the north. And they, even though it was expressed to them time and time again, this is a county project, this is a county asset, you're getting billed, all this stuff, they were just very angry and concerned, because many of- some of them are seniors that definitely can't- they're feeling like they're getting priced out of their house. You had single mothers with kids that just- they were just over the grant threshold. They couldn't, you know, they- they don't know how they're going to be able to handle this. So why am I bringing this up? It's the county, right? It's county stuff. It's not ours, but they're our residents. The concern that I'm really having, probably the heartache I'm having, is Broward County passed a code in 2020. And, Mr. Attorney, can you tell us what that code was that they passed in 2020 regarding sewer connections?
Mayor, if I may, quickly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was an ordinance that was adopted by Broward County that's referred to by the-
This is almost starting to look like an item that really should be agendaized. Go right ahead.
I'll give a brief explanation, and to the extent you want to characterize it differently or have it considered differently, I'm happy to-
Well, I'm just concerned when items like this come up, and they're not on the agenda, then we don't-
Sorry, this is the way it came out.
But I'm okay. I'm okay with it, but go ahead.
The ordinance essentially requires connection, septic to sewer, follows state statute. It basically requires that affected properties, which are those properties actually in the City of Pembroke Pines, but are serviced by Broward County, having the installation of the conversion, places the property owner at risk to pay the cost and expense, as the Vice Mayor described, for the connection that otherwise is being occasioned by the county's construction work. So the- our city residents who are in the county service area, under the state statute, under the county charter, et cetera, are being requested and required to connect the dots, so to speak, to connect their newly-installed sewer system to the county system. That's essentially what the ordinance-
And the most important part of that code is that the City of Pembroke Pines code enforcement is the one who's required to do the enforcement. It's not the county. So Pembroke Pines, now if they- if they come and say connect, and they don't connect, which they said, by the way, to the people at the meeting, literally, they said, oh, we can't tell you to connect. They literally said that verbatim. We cannot tell you to connect. But in a year from now, we're just going to go ahead and start billing you as if you were getting sewer service. Well, you know, they set it up for folks to sit there and, well, we're not going to connect. And what does that mean, then, to us? The county's going to come to us and say, oh, hey, you guys are supposed to do the enforcement. And as I had conversation with the attorney, we had talked about a little bit, well, what's the consequences of that? Well, it could become one of those Chapter One-Sixty-four conflict resolution, because we choose not to put people in even worse situation than what they are in, or we can get into litigation. And so I think what I'm asking is that we recognize, we got this kind of circumstance happening. People are going to be in massive distress. We, if we own the system, could easily figure out what to do, but because we don't, the county does.
Okay, so-
So I am asking, if you- I'm bringing it in for the landing, as you ask.
Go ahead.
So I would like to have support from my colleagues, that we at least prepare a resolution by this commission to Broward County, asking them to at least do what we had done in allowing people to pay for their sewer connections through their water bill as we have done. So we know that we could legally do it. We know that they should legally be able to do it, too. And I think by resolution, telling the county commission, I think we need their support, because the administration has already said no.
It's impossible to say no to that. I would prefer, if we could, to put these items on the agenda, so that there's public notice. But we have talked about this in the past, so it is in order. We have asked numerous times the county to get out of there and let us handle it.
That's right.
And they refused to do it.
We have, we have-
And I don't really understand. Who makes their water?
Hollywood, I think.
Hollywood sends it there?
If I'm not mistaken.
So Hollywood sends it there, but they run it.
Yeah.
But we have to enforce it, but they're in our city, it just-
It's very-
It's very complicated.
And it doesn't allow us to-
And then, when they're not happy with their provider, they blame us, because they're- it's just- there's too many cooks in this kitchen. And I think that that should be part of the resolution, that, you know, it's just- it's just very complicated.
Mayor, I have a-
And I'd like to ask the que- if I could, so why is our code enforcement officer enforcing county responsibilities? Don't they have their own code people?
May I respond, Mayor?
Yeah.
I know the answer. The answer is actually in the ordinance. And the ordinance essentially-
Whose ordinance?
The county ordinance.
Says what?
Which applies countywide, because under the county charter, it makes reference to environmental matters that affect public health and safety. And by virtue of that definition in the county charter, they have county-wide jurisdiction to impose their ordinance on the city. And what they do is they require, under the county ordinance that's referred to by the Vice Mayor, that the city's code enforcement officers, code enforcement department, has the responsibility of enforcing the code.
But don't they have their own code office?
It's a complicated set of facts and circumstances, but the legal conclusion is that under the county charter, environmental matters, under the county charter, apply countywide, and they essentially prevail over city ordinances. And it's an interesting dichotomy of laws, but that's what the requirements are.
All right. The Vice Mayor's made a motion. Is there a second for-
I have a question before we get too deep. I have a question for the City Attorney. Conceptually, fine, but why not, if we can, City Attorney, why not we just pay the county for the connection, and then the residents just pay us back? Wouldn't that just cut it right to the chase?
Well, what- how much have we talked about?
Meaning, I mean, if it's five to ten, and then we enter into some type of-
He says it's half the village.
I understand that, sir, but we did it with the folks north of Ninth, and they paid us back. So what I'm saying is, is if-
We need another bond issue.
Is if we have, if we have the ability to assess through, I don't know if the ordinance would have to be created. Give me an idea. Is this an overlay district?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, quickly, I know that-
This is why I really like these kinds of items on the agenda, because questions like this come up, and we don't have the answer.
We had, I can tell you specifically, that we've had county commissioners not pick up the phones of these folks. And I don't- I'm-
Well, I can't imagine that applies to the current-
They didn't.
Let's be careful what we're saying.
No, I can tell you for a fact, they did not. Time and time and time again, they wanted answers. And the Vice Mayor is right. These folks have been worried for a very long time.
This issue's been around a long time.
A very long time. And there's just been an absence of people from County Hall providing them the information. So if County Hall can't solve it, I want to know if we can solve it for them.
So if I may, so that's- that we at least need to allow the county the opportunity-
Agreed.
-to do that. And then if not, because there's- you're on the right track, and in the event they say no, there's probably another solution. However, that-
I want to be prepared for that other solution, Vice Mayor. I want to- I don't want to give people hope, and then we don't have a solution for them.
And that's why I didn't want to have the conversation-
I want to have the structure in place.
That's why I didn't want to have the conversation out of turn, because it's not a jet.
Mr. Mayor, the unfortunate thing is, is that this meeting was held well in-
I don't disagree.
After-
I'm not blaming you.
After everything was put in, and I just needed to address the ASAP.
That's why I'm trying to cooperate.
Because our community needs to know that they're actually- Because our community needs to know that they are actually looking out for them.
I understand.
They were really, really angry.
And I can, it's totally understandable. So is there a second to the Vice Mayor's...
Second.
Okay, there's a second. All right. I, I would like to add to the, I would like to add to the resolution that we authorize the Vice Mayor to work together with administration and the City Attorney to figure out the wording of this.
Draft and adopt, Mr. Mayor. Draft and adopt.
And I would like to direct him to please do that on our behalf as part of the motion without objection.
I'd like to, okay.
You want to speak up?
Yes. I actually got a call from one of the residents at Pine Village because she had my number from where I worked out over at the county. I told her, you know, longer working there than I worked here, but she did mention about the, the same circumstance and that her neighbors are just as frustrated and she understood that it was the county and that's why she was trying to reach out to the county. But I actually reached out to staff at the county today and let them know, Ms. Davis's staff members let them know, they talked to at least that one resident and maybe others that have been able to get ahold of her. I suggested that this is a conversation that we need to have, so maybe she would be reaching out, we're, we're reaching out. But all of that was kind of happening today as well, but I...
And I will call Alex tomorrow about it as well. I'll help, I'll help by doing that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If the item passes this evening, I'd ask that you allow me the opportunity to draft this item and bring it back for the next available public meeting so we can properly air it. This is a detailed document.
It needs to be on the agenda before we vote on it.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of those items that does require public input, thank you, Mayor.
And, and let's, let's also answer the questions. How many houses are involved? How much money would there be involved? Let's, let's, let's have all of the data and all of the information so that we know what's before us. Anything further on the item?
Yes, one Mayor, if I, if you can?
Yes.
Just for the record, to make sure that no one who's listening thinks otherwise. This was not a special assessment in the city of Pembroke Pines, this is a voluntary program.
That's correct.
Implemented by the City Commission, finding a public purpose to make these installations, implemented by the administration and put forth by the Utilities Department. People are doing this voluntarily, there's not a special assessment here.
And that's the operative word, voluntary.
At least we're making the effort, but at the end of the day, this is their asset, so they have to, they have to...
They don't do it, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anything further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. With that?
Adjourned.
We are adjourned, thank you very...